Yo, hi everyone, this is AB. So, hello my friend. Looks amazing. Very nice, very nice and neat. Yeah, what was I saying? Yeah, so why I'm here today in Dartford? Well, the reason I'm here, I was kind of blackmailed by a subscriber. He said, "I give you this, officer guidance for people filming inside DWP." Yeah, he said, "I will give you all this, whatever, manual or whatever it is, so memo, a new memo for G4S, if you come and audit the Job Centre here in Dartford." Uh, so yeah, I went through this, I found it quite interesting. It's quite, uh, I will, I mean, I will leave you a couple of pictures because I cannot leave you the link. So yeah, I'm just gonna sit here and go through it quickly. So obviously, uh, they had lots of people filming and there was lots of shoving and pushing and licking. And also it's from G4S. So yeah, it does say that the DWP do actually restrict filming inside the premises, but they cannot stop us outside. But the truth is, it's not illegal. It's just their wish really, they're just requesting the members of the public not to film. Uh, then it goes ahead, uh, it says what G4S are supposed to do in case somebody comes in and film. Here it states like, "Just approach the person, ask him not to film. If they refuse, just start filming." And it goes on and on. And it says, "Disengage to any, like, any kind of conversation." And most importantly, never make any kind of physical contact unless, unless they're protecting themselves. Now, this is quite interesting. Uh, yeah. So I'm just gonna go inside this, uh, Job Centre, hopefully it's not a trap. I hope not. Yeah, just gotta go inside and I'll probably go to quite a few Job Centres now with this. Just to see if, uh, G4S are following it. Yeah, alright. Let's get there and see what happens. Sweating, looks like him. Those two's got the same glasses and everything. Yeah, so, let's go. Yeah, not sure if it's that building there or that one. Either way, we need to cross over to the other side. Oh dear, oh dear, what the heck? What's going on here? It's just full of water. Alright. That's not gonna happen. I don't have my willys on me. This place looks, it doesn't look great, I must admit. I just walked past the town and that. When I started the video, it was quite nice with that. Like, Guider's doing a great job. Everywhere else looks rough. Let me see. I think I'm lost, I don't think that's the building, right? Alright, Google, Google, Google. So yeah, that's the other side of the tunnel. Or the crossover, whatever you wanna call it. Oh, he's giving on, man. Seriously? Castle not doing anything about this. So yeah, if you're in a wheelchair, good luck with that. Looks like, uh, you might need a boat. So yeah, that's, uh, I think that's the Job Centre in question. Hello my friend. How's it going? Yeah, yeah, not too bad. Oh, I wouldn't mind one, yeah, yeah.
What's your, what's, what's that, filming or something?
Actually, do I have to wear a mask?
Yeah, but also you're doing your videoing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, uh, I'm just filming. Uh, just anything that's publicly accessible, I'm just gonna have a quick look and then... Oh, you're not letting me in? Oh, why not? Oh, right. No, no, okay, I can use my own. So I just, I just need to get the public information. Is there any reason why you're denying me service? Any reason why I'm denied service?
Uh, it's manager can talk to you in a moment.
Alright. I feel like I'm discriminated, man. You're letting everybody in, apart from me, what's going on? It's not appointment only, is it?
Sorry?
Hang on, let me put that down, yeah? It's not appointment only.
You're allowed to come in, if you don't put your phone, I'll probably let you in. Phone, you put your phone away, did you allow it? Yeah, yes, yeah. Hold on, you said that you'd put, you'd put your phone away.
Yeah, I did. Now I put it back on.
So you came in for inception?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, just taking information. Oh, no, no, it's okay, I'm only in public places. Sorry? Where?
You're videoing people, that don't wanna be videoed.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not filming them at all.
I bet they're on there, if you have a look.
Yeah, but, uh, that's...
They don't wanna be on your phone.
Yeah, they can speak for themselves. Yeah, it's public billion, exactly, that's why I'm here. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
People don't need to be filming them, they're not given any permission.
Sorry, that again? Yeah, yeah, I don't film them. That's fine, if they ask me to, it's fine. Sorry? Filming you.
I don't want to film me either.
Why not?
Why should you film me, you've got my permission.
I don't need your permission.
Yes, you do.
I don't need to. That's it, really, wh- wh- why are you guys surrounding me like this? I'm feeling very uncomfortable now. What's going on? I just, I just wanna get all that information. I haven't because, because they were following me and I felt intimidated. So do you, I don't, to be honest, I don't know what I've got, why I haven't. Permission, I don't need your permission. Alright, let me just get that information peacefully. Listen, you need to read this. You as well, you need to read this. You're supposed to disengage, don't talk. Yeah? Did you read this? Because this is why I'm here today. I'm just making sure you guys got the memo that when you see members of the public filming, you can ask them not to film. If they refuse, just stop talking to them. That's it, this is all publicly accessible. I get, members of the public can speak to me. I don't need to ask permission. If I go out, if, if I go outside now... Anyway, I'll just get the... You wanna see? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. While I'm doing this, you can have a read, if you don't mind, I need it back. That's, that's not... Exactly, that's not good. That's not good. No, no, this is actually in public place and it's in the open. So you need to hide that. I'm informing you that you need to hide it. You're breaking GDPR. Is he on the internet? Oh, is it? Nah, these are names. Yeah, but I know who's coming in, who's coming out and all this. That's not good, that's, I think they're breaking GDPR. Anyway, so nearly done, guys. If you're watching this, do not do this stuff. Hello. You forgot your... No, I'm not, I'm just gonna tell him something. I think you, you forgot your wig upstairs. You forgot your wig upstairs. Say that again? Say that again? I didn't?
Is there anything else, any information, other information you need?
No, no, that's pretty much it. Hey, where's your wig? You see, this guy, this guy takes a joke. Yeah, you take... Audit in Britain, yeah, 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 that's all, I'm just testing you guys, that's all it is. Notice every time you see a member of the public, I put the camera away. And I blur them off. And I'm just checking, you guys got the memo on this? What it is lately, a lot of G4S staff, they've been pushing people, shoving people, licking people, believe it or not. Did you watch the licking one? That was, that was crazy. So, I just got this memo, going around making sure you guys are just obeying by it. And that's all it is. So basically, you cannot be touching people and all that. That's it, if you think I'm, I'm being like aggressive, I think you need to call the police, that's it. As you can see, I'm peaceful. Say that again? Uh, yeah, pretty much it, um, like I said, I've done what I had to do. That's it, you guys need to behave, simple as that. Thank you very much, and lady, remember, in public, I can film. I don't need permission, consent, nothing. Pretty much nothing, it's the same here or there, it's, it's open for public. It's exactly the same, almost exactly the same. I know you guys, DWP says you don't want us to film, but it's tough, we will film. Yes, have a lovely day. Don't take it personal, I was only checking. Thank you very much. Take care, guys. So yeah, just gonna also do a quick test outside. Outside apparently, G4S got no jurisdiction whatsoever. So inside, it can come and say to you, "Please don't film." Switch the camera on. Outside, nothing. Nothing at all, even in fact... Sorry, you okay? Oh, joking by me? I heard you saying he's here. So yeah, as I said, yeah, outside, I mean, even stays that, ooh, that's open. It says, uh, you should not step outside, at all. After an incident or, you know. So, yeah. I can see members of the public. I can see all the auditors, nobody has any interest in filming, filming members of the public. And they pretend, they all say like, "Oh, you shouldn't be filming people." In reality, they don't want you to film them. Alright, boss. Yeah, they just don't want you to film them because some of them are embarrassed with their job and others they just bully people. Yeah, we saw a IFi being pushed around in the car park. Really assaulted. Don't know if you guys watched the video or not. Hey, they're on alert again. Are they on alert? Yeah, of course I miss you, man. You're such a nice guy, I thought I'd come back and say hello again. No, no, what it is, I forgot to film outside. So, I just came back to do that very quickly. And that's it, that's it, you shouldn't see me again.
Well, you have a nice day, yeah?
Take care. So yeah, guys, after seeing that, underground crossing, whatever you wanna call it, I just thought I'd come here to Dartford Borough Council and tell them why they're not cleaning the street or whatever. Alright, so not next to that place, so I don't know if it's the right or not. Yeah, hello guys. How you doing? You alright? Not sure, to be honest, if I'm in the right place or not. I just saw something in, like, in the street that looks really bad. That probably needs reporting and stuff. Probably like, well, or like a disabled crossing, a crossing, not just a disabled crossing. Who, who deals with this kind of stuff? I'm not an expert, like a... Do you wanna see? Yeah, yeah. Where do you, there you go, look at that. So that's like, uh, underground crossing kind of thing, you know, by the Job Centre? And as you can see, just full of water, it's impossible to get through. I couldn't get through.
Okay, you'd need to speak to our waste team and they would arrange for our contractors to go out there and clear that.
Your waste team, alright, let's speak to your waste team then.
Yes, you'll need to speak to them over the phone.
Over the phone, can I speak to them now? Can I not speak to them like, right now?
You can use our phones round here. You'll see, fully completed, and the list of options on the phone, press the option that says waste.
Waste?
Yeah. And they'll take a report from your phone and get off on that, so that you can clear it.
Oh, alright, okay, cool. Waste.
This. Recordings are kept for a period of three months. To listen to our full statement about how your data will be handled, please press 1 on your telephone keypad now. If you are calling regarding a problem with noise, odor, or other nuisances, including pest control, please press 1. For anything else, please press 2. If you are calling to request a bulky waste collection, this service is now only available online. Please visit www.dartford.gov.uk. If you are calling to report a missed rubbish or recycling collection, press 1. If you are calling to request a medical waste collection, press 2. If you are calling to order a replacement bin or box, press 3. If you are calling to make payment for your garden waste renewal invoice, press 4. For any other waste or park inquiry, press 5.
Sorry, what was your name again? High Valley, yeah, yeah, this is AB. Yeah, I just wanna report some, you know, like this, like an underground crossing in town, just by the Job Centre. Which is completely blocked with water and trolleys, like lots of rubbish really. Uh, I couldn't get through, so yet alone, like, a wheelchair user definitely won't be able to, to access. I wonder, I've taken a couple of pictures, if you wanna, you're welcome to, if you wanna have a look.
Is it flooded?
It's flooded and there's like lots of rubbish in there.
Alright, okay, um, let me just, um, double check for you just a bit, I won't keep you in my mail.
Sure. Oh, I wonder if this is copyrighted. What? I thought somebody was arguing. The joy is the waiting with rubbish music like that. So yeah, what's all this? My god, it destroyed the place. Look, look. You see how the option to pay is always the first option? Ah, this is a bit deep and it's like, like, 20 minutes, man. Hey guys, I think that's a deadline, man, it keeps... You can hear it, yeah? It's been like that for the last 20 minutes. Huh?
So you're trying to get rid of the waste thing?
Yeah.
Put the phone down and then try again, because everyone's available.
They're all available?
Yeah, everyone's, everyone's available to take calls, put the phone down, if you are, then dial 1529.
Can you ring him and ask him to come down?
That's not an option, you need to dial 1529.
Well, that's an option? You call that an option?
We don't offer FaceTime services, I'm afraid, it's over the phone.
Well, that's not an option either. God's sake. You're saving, hang on, there you go. High Valley, yeah, I'm just trying to report, uh, you know, a crossing that's completely blocked with rubbish and floods and and I'm not going too far here, this...
Oh, I think I, did I put you for into Kent Highway?
Well, yeah, it just keeps ringing for no reason.
Oh, the phone is a different company to us, so I can give you their direct number if you wanna try at home.
Try at home? Hang on. So what?
I can put you back through or I can give you their direct number.
Hang on. Yeah, go on, what's the, the direct number?
03000.
03000.
418.
418.
181.
181. Alright then, so I'll just go home and call them, shall I? Shall I just get everybody to call them, yeah?
Sorry?
Shall I just get everyone to call them?
Well, you can call them if she's got to report that, because it will be them.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get everybody to call them. Okay, thank you very much. Cheers. Yeah, cheers, I'll get everyone to call them. Thank you, that's it. This guy needs to come on. Right, let's get out of here. Oh, yes. You see how quick they are at taking the money? Sorry, sorry. Yes. You alright? Why? How did you know it's filming?
I know you're filming.
Wow, you're very, very sharp. So I'll tell you why. I'll tell you. Oh, sorry. Why is he taking pictures? Why are you taking pictures?
I'm issuing a ticket.
Why are you taking pictures? You're acting suspicious, man.
And it's been filmed as well, so I'm sure filming us.
No, 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 it's alright, no, no, I will tell you why I filmed. What it is, I went to the council to report something, yeah? Like, uh, you probably know because you walk around a lot. You know about the Job Centre? You know the... You know the Job Centre, yeah? Uh, there is like a crossing, underground crossing. It's flooded, full of crap. I went to report it, it's like, nobody's interested, man.
Just be reporting it.
Huh?
Just report it, they'd get on to it.
No, I was on the phone, I was waiting and waiting, waiting. What it shows, it shows like, when you report something, it takes forever. But when you, when the council wanna take the money, they're very quick. They sort it? But they didn't even take... They didn't even take the complaint? No, 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 what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say like, the, it's like to, you go to the council to complain about something. I did, I did, I did. I did, I did, I took, I went to the council to complain about something. It's like, they basically stood there, huh? I just explained to her, you know where by the Job Centre, there's a crossing, underground? It's flooded. It's not just floods, there's rubbish as well. Well, it needs to be cleaned because wheelchair accessible people, wheelchair users, you cannot get through. So I went to report it, they took apps, I can't even get through. I was waiting on the phone 20 minutes, so when you report something like that, they're not interested. But taking money off people, you are very quick, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to document this. Yeah, yeah, go on.
I phoned you to make a complaint on the phone. Hello sir, yes, yes, I see your complaint, I got it. Okay, click, hang up.
I couldn't even get through to human being. It was like machine.
Do an email. Email, paper document, paper trace.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there is a trace. Yeah? And they have to reply to you. Because it's some document, yeah? You've sent in a document to the council saying, "I wish to complain about ABC." Okay? And they've got, you've got a copy of it, they've got a copy.
Yeah, yeah, I get that, I get that, but what I'm trying to say is they make it very difficult to complain. But when you, when the council, hang on, when the council take money off the people, it's very easy. That's, that's the point I'm trying to make, that's it. Did that guy go away with the, with the ticket? But anyway, I'm only, this lady asked me why you're filming and I'm just responding. Who?
We are.
Are you?
Yeah, that's on. And all the cameras in there. And, yeah, and all the cameras and so, they, they follow us.
No problem.
Yeah, but that's what you need to do, put your complaints into the council, invite them. Okay, so when they put the phone down, that's the end of your complaint. It was in writing, and what happens every year, the councils get a thing called an audit done.
Audit?
Audit, so central government.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Westminster, they send officers down and they say, "What are some of your complaints? Let's go through some of your complaints." So I go through, "What happened to this complaint here? Oh, we had this resolved, we sent this off, this off, then we resolved that. What about this one? Oh, well, this one hasn't been done." On a phone call, nothing. Email.
It works.
That's the way to go.
Alright, no problemo. You too, my friend. You take it easy. Can I just ask one thing? One last thing, one last thing. Yeah, sorry, yeah, one more last thing, I just need that number because you recorded me.
That's fine.
So I'll just take that.
I'm supervisor as well.
Oh, no, no, that's fine, you can record, just in case if I request the footage. Have a lovely day, don't get run over.
We need to show to delete that because it's under GDPR.
Wha- what is, this one? No, this one isn't.
Under GDPR, you can't actually, uh, record.
And did you, I don't, uh, it doesn't apply to me, my friend? Yeah, I thought you said you're supervisor. You know what, you were doing very well and then you started talking rubbish. You know what? You were doing very well and then you started talking rubbish. Did you really have to do that? And the GDPR! This GDPR blanket. I tell you what, they throw this rubbish everywhere. And the GDPR! I will shoot you! This is not allowed. No, no, not allowed, man. Look, not allowed! Not allowed! Not allowed! No, 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 no.